Bear with me.
I know, it's okay.
It's working now.
All right. Welcome to the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. It's Wednesday, July 23, 2025 at 5:00 PM. There is an amended agenda back there for those who need one. We have two of our council members traveling internationally, so they are on conference. Teleconference location number one is in Ireland and teleconference location number two is in South Africa. They are listed on our amended agenda, but one of the locations is not as accurate as we would like. So Sarah Margulies, council member, will be participating tonight, but as a member of the public. And I will be calling on her to to ask questions and respond to questions in a way that's more enhanced than a regular community member. So that's clear with everyone. Let's begin with roll call.
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Yes, here.
And online, councilmember Margulies is here as a member of the public. But we'll note that she's also present. And at the moment, councilmember Paulson is absent, but we hope to see him soon.
We're hoping he logs in. Sarah, can you hear us okay? Just give me a thumbs up if you can. Okay, fantastic. Great. So if you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. This brings us to item number two, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment and bring up a topic to the members of the city council that is not on the agenda. And because it has not been on the agenda, just a reminder, we can't have a lengthy conversation about it. We can ask questions of staff and maybe put it on a future agenda, but we won't have a discussion about it tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment for an item not on the agenda? Yes, please. No, you're on the agenda. So please come forward and introduce yourself and bring the microphone down a little bit. Thank you.
My name is Good Evening Mayor Way and councilmembers. My name is Gillian Schultz, and I live with my husband and daughter at 203 Hawthorne. At the previous city council meeting on July 2, we presented the key points of our appeal for the project of 201 Hawthorne. Our presentation was in keeping with the mayor's wishes that the discourse be civil. We systematically presented evidence showing how the project would block our view on our property as it sits directly behind 201 Hawthorne. We lost the appeal, but that's not why I'm here. In contrast to our evidence-based presentation, the owners of 201 Hawthorne adopted a tactic of defaming our character and presenting false information. The tactic was anything but civil, and I'm simply here to go on the public record to counter that. We met with the owners of 201 several times before the planning commission meeting. They showed us project sketches of the front of the proposed house, and they asked us for a letter of support. Since our house sits behind 201, we asked multiple times to see the plans as they would appear from our perspective. Despite several promises to show us those plans, they were never provided before the story polls went up. We sought to compromise by hiring our own architect to draw alternative designs involving minor modifications to the plans for 201. These alternative designs that would help preserve our view were based on the publicly available plans for 201. In response, the owners of 201 took the extreme position accusing us and our architect of copyright infringement. We sought compromise by suggesting that there be improvements to 203 instead of modification to 201. This would have achieved the goal of preserving our view while also preserving the plans for 201. These types of agreements are commonplace. We talked to multiple contractors and our architect, and they had all said that they have seen this before. The owners of 201 greatly mischaracterized this offer and essentially accused us of extortion and being greedy. Perhaps the least coherent aspect of their presentation was when the owners of 201 claimed that the retaining wall separating our properties was illegal. This wall was fully permitted by the City of Larkspur Building Division on October 29, 2020, permit number 20202650, and greatly benefits both 203 and 201. In fact, early in our discussions, the owners of 201 went out of their way to thank us for building that wall. The purpose of this presentation is to set the public straight and not to revisit the council's decision on our appeal, which we respect, although we disagree with it. We hope that in future proceedings more closely, we hope that future proceedings more closely resemble the mayor's wishes and that they proceed in a civil manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to address the council in a public comment? Seeing none, are there any hands raised in our public online forum? Or do we have one? No hands raised. Okay. Usually I can see from here, but that's okay. Great. Well, I'll close public comment. That brings us to presentations and proclamations. Do we have a staff report on this, or would you like me to start?
I think this one's all you, ma'am.
Oh, it's all me. I know this is going to embarrass you, Teresa. We're going to ask you to come forward. So tonight, we have a very special presentation. We have actually a proclamation that I get to read, and we're gonna, we're gonna have you stand there if you're all right with that. So it's a, it's a bittersweet time when we read proclamations of some of our longtime employees who are Larkspur family members who are leaving us for retirement or for moving into new roles or, or places. But this is for our dear Teresa who is retiring. And we have created, thank you to our staff and lots of people who thought about all the things you've done, a proclamation, and I'd like to read it if that's all right with you. Whereas librarian Teresa Capasso, did I pronounce that right, Capasso? I thought so, is retiring after nearly 22 years of dedicated service to the Larkspur Library and the Larkspur community, having first joined the city on October 10, 2003. That's before I moved here. Whereas Teresa brought to the library not just the love of books, but a deep belief in the role of libraries as welcoming, inspiring, and inclusive spaces for everyone in the community. Whereas, in addition to her responsibilities as reference librarian, Teresa has served as Larkspur's Children's Librarian, where she became a Storytime staple and a summer reading program champion, delighting Larkspur's youngest readers and fostering a lifelong love of books. Whereas Teresa creatively and dedicate, and creativity and dedication shown during the COVID-19 pandemic, boy, we were all there at that time, when she adapted library programs for virtual and outdoor formats, ensuring families remain connected to library services and literacy opportunities during challenging times. Whereas she consistently curated a thoughtful, responsive collection that balanced traditional materials with digital formats, always with the goal of reflecting the diverse interests and needs of the Larkspur community. Whereas Teresa led a longstanding book club, that's right, I remember that, provided helpful references services and approached each day with professionalism, compassion, and unwavering love for the written word. Whereas she described the library as, quote, "a crossroads of our community," and worked through her career to make it just that, "a vibrant, inclusive place for discovery, connection, and joy." So on behalf of the city council here and online and in the rest of Europe, where some of them are, I, Mayor Catherine Way, do proclaim our deepest appreciation and gratitude to Teresa Capasso for her exceptional service and enduring contribution to Larkspur Library. We wish her many happy hours of reading and discovery and retirement, and to that four-year-old granddaughter that we just shared, we shared mutual thoughts about, and look forward to seeing her in the stacks of the new library as a very well-read patron. So in witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Larkspur to be affixed this 23rd day of July, 2025.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Just saying, it's been a joy and a pleasure to serve the citizens of this wonderful community. And I just thank all of you very much. Thank you.
It's not in that proclamation, but I want to add, it's been a long, hard, challenging move, move to our new library facility. And I know you're going to come back, and you're welcome to be back. And I'd love your professional take on it as we get further and further into occupying it for how we can make it a special place. Sure. All right. That brings us to item number four. Approval of the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, item 4.1, which is a resolution about Rose Lane improvements. Is there any council member who would like to pull that item for discussion? No? Is there anyone in the online audience or the in-house audience who'd like to pull that item for discussion?
There is a hand raised in the online audience.
Okay. To pull that item for discussion?
I don't know. Would you like me to invite them to talk?
Well, let's wait a minute. We're gonna.
Okay.
So none here, and we don't have councilmember Paulson yet.
We do not.
Okay, just want to make sure he is acknowledged if he's there. All right, we do have one item to pull for a question, and could you please identify who you are?
Speaker, ending in 1402, you've been unmuted.
James Holmes, Larkspur. Was there any outreach to the Rose Lane residents or their HOA about this big change in their main entry road? I think many residents might have concerns. I know that the HOA has weighed in on occasion on a variety of things less impactful than this proposed change. The traffic circle, I know, was not a part of the original plans for the subdivision, as I recall, and while the residents knew there was going to be an intersection for library access, it wasn't originally designed. Just as a matter of good government and community relations, I think there should be an outreach to get resident input. If there is any input, then I would question whether this should be on the consent calendar, which is supposed to be a, for routine things, as the agenda says. This traffic circle isn't routine, in my opinion, and it is potentially controversial and, and novel. Just looking at the drawing, I can see cause for concern. Cars exiting the subdivision are pushed right into the path of cars exiting the library driveway. And conversely, cars going to the library are pushed into the path of cars exiting the subdivision.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. I can assure you, there's been dozens and dozens of hours working with that neighborhood and a lot of input with the neighborhood between our city staff. But do you have any further need to elaborate on that?
No, we did have quite a.
But no, I think we're done, Mr. Holmes. I'm just having the city manager respond.
No, we did conduct several meetings with the HOA leadership. All designs like this have their supporters and their detractors, but the key here is to not only design a safe road, but create a good visual break between the residential portion of Rose Lane and the civic portion of Rose Lane. And this meets all those goals.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion.
Second. Since we have not a full house here, we have to do a roll call vote? Yes. So can we do a roll call vote? We're following the rules here, and we're following them specifically to the letter, my book.
Okay. Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andre?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes. All right, that brings us to number five, the manager's report.
My report is very short. It's simply to add on to the celebration of Ms. Capasso's retirement, which is that we're going to do an open house celebration. The community is welcome to stop by. So in the library next Wednesday, July 30, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM, we invite folks to come in, wish Teresa well, as her last day is at the end of the month. So next Wednesday, 4 o'clock in the library downstairs.
Thank you. That brings us to council members' reports. Anything?
Nothing today.
Sure. I want to update everyone on MCE. The board voted last week to increase rates on the deep green customers. And there was a very robust discussion around that. I think anytime we talk about rate increases, I think, you know, it's, it warrants a robust discussion, and the board was trying to weigh the increasing cost. So the delta other spread between light green and deep green customers has not changed since 2010, when MCE formed. And so basically, the deep green customers pay a penny per kilowatt hour more than the light green customers because the product is supposed to be 100% renewable, basically. And the light green is about 60% renewable energy. So the, the proposed increase by staff was a quarter of a penny. So instead of paying one penny per kilowatt hour more, it's now going to be one and a quarter cent more per kilowatt hour. You all should know that your representatives from Marin County, with the exception of one, all voted down the rate increase. We felt that the deep green customers were the best customers, and we want more people to elect to be deep green. And so we felt that this might potentially disincentivize people from electing or opting into deep green. So I vote, along with, you know, all the other council members and representatives from Marin County, we voted no, but the, the proposal passed. And so it will be in effect starting October 2025. I have asked MCE staff to do a rate impact analysis on the City of Larkspur's municipal counts, as well as CMPA and Central Marin Fire. So depending on the results of that analysis, I may be bringing it back to council just to see if there's any action we want to take with rate increase. For what I understand, the rate increase is supposed to be small, but anyways, again, depending on the number, you know, we may bring it back and just have council take a look at that. And then the second item that we talked about, MCE is going to be creating a pilot program targeted at municipalities. So the deep green product is supposed to be 100% renewable, but it's not 100% renewable 24 hours a day. And so now the state legislature has mandated that it need, that CCAs and the utility companies need to provide a 24-hour deep green product, essentially. And so they want to roll out a pilot program. It will be opt-in for municipalities. There will be a cost to opt-in to this program. And so once we get some more information about that, I may also bring that back to council and to see whether or not we want to opt in into this pilot program.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, Sarah, I know you're participating as a community member today, but I'd like to give you an opportunity, if you have any report out that you would like to do on council member report outs. Okay. But make sure you raise your hand if you want to, because it's hard for me to, to, I want to make sure to acknowledge that you're there. Great. So that leaves us to public hearings, item number seven, which we have none tonight. And we're moving on to eight, which is why we're here. Eight, business item 8.1, is to introduce ordinances to adopt by reference and amend the 2022-2025 California Green Building Code standard codes based on findings related to local conditions. We, I'm sure the staff will explain this, but we had to add this meeting on as an extra meeting because there are some deadlines coming up that are based on state law and the legislature, and our regular schedule would not have allowed us a timely ability to, to discuss this under the deadline that the state has imposed. So I'd like to acknowledge, we have a lot of public comments that have already been submitted in writing, and they are actually posted online now for everyone to read, and they have been received by the council. If you are here to give public comment, you will have an opportunity, but just know it's, we have a very good staff who've already posted many of them. We also have a supplemental report that I think the staff will explain, and I believe, is that available on the back a little bit, or it's online? But it includes new information that has been acquired, and we want to make sure that we are very timely on this so that we cover and meet the legislative needs. So with that introduction, could we have a staff report on 8.1?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. My name is Shannon O'Hare, and I am the Assistant City Manager of the City of Larkspur. Tonight, we're bringing you item 8.1, which is to consider two ordinances that would update our code to increase standards around electrification with the goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions in, in accordance with the goals set in our Climate Action Plan and our General Plan. So I will give a, just, yeah. We have a very brief background here. A lot of folks in the audience and the community have been following us along with this issue. But at the meeting on July 2, we presented to council that there was a piece of state legislation, AB 306, which was incorporated into a budget trailer bill, AB 130. It was signed and chaptered, and it essentially pauses all updates to local building codes beginning October 1, 2025, and ending June 1, 2031, far into the future. It seems that way now. AB 31 says that the Building Standards Commission shall stop approving building code amendments beginning on October 1, 2025. If you do not follow building standards codes commissions and these items regularly, this is, this is significant for Larkspur because we have been waiting for the 2025 statewide code updates, particularly the Cal Green Building Code updates, to consider amendments. And that's usually done later in the year. This bill makes it so the last window of opportunity to update our codes is this summer. So this evening, we're here at a special meeting. It requires two meetings to pass any Cal Green updates. One of the meetings is this evening, the special meeting, and should council decide to move forward with the code updates, the second meeting will be at our regular meeting of the city council on August 20, 2025. So with that, I want to say, as I go into the specifics.
And Shannon, if we, let's hypothetically say we approve these two ordinances from the first reading and then the second reading, that puts us under the window of approvals that the state mandated deadline.
Staff believes that we will be able to submit all material so that they will be approved by the October 1, 2025 deadline.
Thank you.
Yep. So before I get into exactly what this means, I want to thank a whole team of people who worked on this item. It was not just me. I want to thank our city manager's office, the whole city manager's office, our city attorney's office for working on this, as well as our community development department, our community development director, and our chief building official has done a lot of work on this. I also want to thank my counterparts at our neighboring cities, as well as the county staff. They've been incredibly helpful. Two of them are online this evening to answer some of the technical questions that you might have about this process because they live and breathe electrification, building code standards, and sustainability at a granular level in the way that I do not. So if you have some questions, our two folks decided to take time away from their evening to, to support us in this project.
And Shannon, I'd like to acknowledge that, too, that this has taken a lot of staff time, of many people involved in it, as you just referenced, because it is, has a lot of nuances that have been difficult to assess and have been slightly unclear until they've really had to do a lot of research. And I appreciate that summer months are usually our quieter months, and this has definitely consumed a lot of time, but it is of, of direct interest by many members of our community. And I realize that Larkspur is kind of one of the first ones out of the gate in the county as far as the cities and really drilling down to focus on this. And thank you for, for putting that together. It was a lot of work in the last week and a half or two.
Yeah. So I appreciate it. And I also appreciate all the members of the community who both submitted written comment and are here with us this evening and has been following this issue closely. So the potential code amendments that were placed for council consideration at the July 2 meeting included the 2025 California Building Code Standards, which are the universal building code standards update. That was something that at that time, we believe we might bring forward to you this evening. Since then, staff's been able to do further analysis and believe that those building code standards are not subject to this deadline. So we have more time to adopt those and thoroughly review them amongst all of the relevant departments and bring to you at a later date. What we are bringing to you this evening is the 2025 California Green Building Standards Code at the Tier 1 level. So there are mandatory levels for Cal Green Building Standards Codes that you can adopt. Tier 1 is above that. Tier 1 goes above and beyond and has some additional requirements. That is the, the draft ordinance that is brought to you this evening. It incorporates these in, in their entirety at the Tier 1 level ahead of this October 1 deadline. It also includes a local amendment to the Tier 1 standard setting the definition for newly constructed and newly, new construction to include significant remodels and projects. This is a definition that staff presented in the 2023 Model Electrification Code, and this language exists elsewhere in our code. So in the staff report, there's a city attorney analysis of what that means if we were to opt to include that. The benefits of including that is that it goes even above and beyond what's in Tier 1 at the state level.
That is ordinance 1088. Yeah.
That. I will, this next slide.
So would I jump ahead?
Shannon's going to explain. There's two ordinances in front of you.
Got it, I know.
The one she's talking about is actually 1089.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's 1089, and what was published without the original staff report without amendments. So staff was still working on this. Subsequent to publishing the agenda, we talked to our counterparts, and a portion of adopting these codes requires that we submit something called an energy study. We do not do that energy study in-house. There are consultants that work on that, work on energy studies for, for codes that trigger these requirements, and that energy study may not be ready for the 2025 Cal Green Standards in time for the October 1 deadline. Those energy studies are done on a timeline that assumes early, early New Year 2026, before any of this legislation was moving forward. So we may meet that deadline, or we may not, depending on how things are interpreted. So for good measure, I've, we've also brought a second ordinance, which is ordinance 1088, that adopts the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code at Tier 1 in their entirety. So if you look at our code or look at what we've done previously, we've adopted the 2022 standards in part. We've adopted a lot of them, but we've excluded parts of the Tier 1 in the past, including some of the energy requirements. So this would, this would up our game in terms of what we've adopted, and there is an energy study that's been ready for years on this and would, would go through with, with no problem. Am I technical enough yet, or folks?
You are. That's why we have expertise on our council of all different skill sets, and I relying on my vice mayor and my councilmember Margulies to, to know so much more.
So that's a high-level overview of what's included in the agenda packet as presented by staff. There have been a number of subsequent comments from the community, questions from the community, folks might want to speak, that have also asked additional things of council, of staff, of the community that we can also talk about. But this concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks may have.
Okay, great. So before I open this to the public for comment, I'd like to see if any of the council members have any questions of staff or our city attorney about the supplemental report and amended agenda item? And want to begin?
Sure.
Sure.
Great. Thank you for the staff report, Shannon, and definitely want to thank everyone who's been involved in trying to get this to council in such a short timeframe. I guess a couple of questions. One, so the, the 2025 Cal Green Tier 1 codes, can you explain, maybe for the public, you know, if we adopted 2022 and 2025, a lot of times the 2022 reach portion becomes the, you know, the, the basic, the baseline portion for the 2025. And so if we were to adopt, you know, the 2025, so can you just tell us, like, what, what would be the, what would be really different than, you know, between the 2022 and the 2025 Cal Green codes?
If there's county staff online that wants to chime in or explain this more, then either of you feel free to raise your hand. Each code cycle is more ambitious, with more requirements, gets bigger, better, more, you know, more modern. So 2025 especially was a rigorous, very ambitious code cycle for both the, the building standards and Cal Green. So I can't give a exact comparison of what the delta are between the two in terms of percentages or going through all of the codes. These codes are very, very long. But 2025 is significantly, significantly more ambitious. Is there folks from the county who'd like to speak to it?
Okay.
So let's have the county staff, and I know, Sarah, you have some comments, too. We'll get to you once the county staff gives an explanation for this question.
So with that, I'm going to turn that over to the county staff. I'll let Mark introduce himself and talk about the. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to the county staff. I'll let Mark introduce himself and talk about the, the two different code cycles.
Sure. Mark Chabria from, uh, Sustainability Analyst from the County of Marin. And, and I would just add a little bit, um, more to what Shannon just said about the 2025 code. Uh, the, the 2025 base code update is perceived to be pretty aggressively, um, promoting electrification. Um, the tier one measures are, are really significant, do very significantly go above and beyond, um, the 2022 tier one measures in, in many, many different areas, um, including EV infrastructure requirements, um, different requirements for new construction and remodels as well.
Want to ask him anymore?
All right. Um, that, that's helpful. Thank you. I mean, I, I guess, can you give us a sense for if 2022 required, you know, multifamily or commercial operators to put in, you know, 50%, I don't know, EV chargers at their properties? Like what does 2025 take it to? Does it mandate 100%? You know, EV charging for multifamily owners? I'm just trying to, you know, get a gauge for how different 2025 is versus 2022.
Yeah, I can get back to you with specific, um, specific information for different kinds of project types, but the requirements vary by project type very greatly. And so, you know, I, I'd have to look it up because as Shannon mentioned, the code, the code is very long.
Vice Mayor, I've seen some online summaries that get to your question. And before we have the public hearing on August 20, we can publish links to that.
Okay, okay. Okay, that would be helpful. Great. And then if we want to, if we adopted the 2025 reach codes, I know that's very new, or the tier one Cal Green Codes, it's very new of this energy study that has to be done. Like, are there other jurisdictions within California that have put together this energy study so that we might be able to leverage some of that, some of that, some of their work?
So the energy studies are, are put together by a, a group of consultants that works for the CEC. And that, um, is made available for statewide use.
Oh, I see.
It, it is expected to be available before the end of the year, but not before, uh, that September 30th deadline.
Okay. So, all right. So I understand. So basically if we passed, you know, if we, if we theoretically pass the 2025, um, Cal Green Tier One Codes, you know, by August, this energy study may not be ready. So we could technically not be able to adopt the 2025? Is that, is that what we're saying?
I think the goal is to adopt two ordinances. One that advances the 22 code by adding the tier one.
Right.
And then adopt the, an ordinance to do the 25 code. Hope that gets through the commission up at the state with the caveat, it's only valid if the energy study is produced as expected.
Got it.
The, the nuance here, and I'll, maybe I should just let the city attorney talk, but when we, when we submit this, it is reviewed by actual staff people. It's not just a process. So we don't know exactly what the determination or the judgment call would be if something is approved or not. And we just want to be, you know, extra conservative and extra careful because we're putting in all this investment at work that, and work into this, that something would be approved or that we could confidently say that something would be approved.
I think just to supplement what everyone said, AB 130 has basically just created a significant amount of uncertainty for everyone about what the process looks like until the end of the year. We've crafted the ordinances to try to make it possible for us to, um, get the 2025 Cal Green Code with the optional elements at the tier one level through, both by having the ordinance adopted before the statutory deadline, but also cognizant that we don't, one of the uncertainties is, does the September 30th, October 1 deadline actually apply to that? We don't know.
Okay.
So we're trying to meet the deadline. And then if it turns out that, that the September, October deadline isn't applicable, then it may be that, that, uh, the Energy Commission will still review them once the energy studies are available. Um, and, and the 2025 code adoption will be allowed to proceed. But we wanted to bring you the 2022 adoption so that in the event that that isn't feasible, we will have at least created a framework to, um, to have adopted a higher level of energy efficiency requirements for the community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Scott, do you have questions?
Did you want to?
Yeah, just going to get us first.
Sure.
You're next.
Uh, I, I had a question. Um, I know they both have to be passed a first reading and a second reading. So, and it also feels like we're going to get additional information between this meeting and the next meeting. So are we really being asked to pass them both today as a place to kind of move them both? So they could be passed the next meeting? And then we maybe decide that that next meeting, 2025 is too aggressive for us and we're more comfortable with 2022 or not. But it makes more sense to pass them both today and cross that bridge when we have more information. Does that make sense as a question?
It's an option.
Well, I can give you, I, I can partially answer the question just by, just to make sure, just to cover a piece of the procedure. So, um, the adoption of any of the building codes, set aside all of these particular complications, just the routine every three years, the city council is adopting the building code. We use a process that's called adoption by reference, which is a slightly different ordinance adoption process than the one that you're used to. And it flips the usual order of the meeting so that, that the public hearing is actually required to be held at the second reading. So we are asking you to introduce both ordinances tonight. The actual public hearing will occur in August and that's why we're prepared to, as, as the city manager said, present additional information to you at the second meeting. At that point, just because you have introduced both tonight does not mean that you have to adopt both. You'll have that option. And again, there will be more information available to you as part of the public hearing.
Okay, just, so to make sure I understand, by passing them both tonight, we're not putting anything in cement, we're keeping them both on the table. If we didn't pass one tonight, then it would be taken off the table. We wouldn't have that public hearing.
Right.
Okay, that's, I understand. Thank you very much.
Sarah, you want to unmute and ask some questions?
Thank you very much, Mayor Way. So I want to start by saying thank you so much to all of our staff for all of the hard work that has been put in and, um, really trying to go through all of these, uh, ordinances or sorry, these Cal Green Codes with a fine tooth comb and, and try to, um, understand all the nuance, nuances and, um, you know, complexities of what we're going through. I also want to reiterate that, um, you know, given the current administration and all of the, uh, steps backwards that are being taken, that, you know, now it's super important, uh, for Larkspur to really take action to try to do our part to meet the goals of our Climate Action Plan and our General Plan, um, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. These are, are both, um, you know, things that we've signed up for as a council, uh, with regard to our emergency declaration from 2021. And that, um, although we would be the first agency to move forward with the 2025 Cal Green Standards, we would be catching up essentially with many of our counterparts or, uh, agencies in Marin County adopting the 2022, that being the County of Marin, the City of San Rafael, as well as Corte Madera and having consistency and alignment with our other agencies is very important for, um, building and designer, you know, building, uh, sorry, developers and designers to try to, uh, make it a more seamless process for them. I also wanted to mention that, um, there is some question and it has been brought up about whether or not these actual calculations are needed for adoption of 2025 Cal Green. There is some, um, input from community members who are very much, um, on top of these codes and following them very closely that suggest that potentially, uh, there are not necessarily calculations needed because this resolution cites the California Health and Safety Code as a basis for Larkspur's authority to adopt the 2025 Cal Green Tier One as amended. And the supporting calculations are needed only when a jurisdiction uses California Energy Code as the basis for its authority to adopt such ordinances. So, um, that may not actually be an issue for us to adopt the code. I do think it's really important, you know, given the, uh, catastrophic events that are occurring around the globe, um, and specifically in the state of California, that we need to do our part, uh, to, to do our best, to make our best efforts and do what we can to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And that this path through accepting Cal Green Tier One Codes, the 2025 Cal Green Tier One Codes, give us the best opportunity to achieve our 2030 Climate Action Plan goals. And we signed up as a city to do that, um, in addition to, uh, you know, uh, passing the 2021 emergency, emergency ordinance to, uh, adopt the Climate Action Plan and for 2030 as well as, um, sorry, as well as the, uh, general plan for our city. So, you know, this is in, in following or in, um, my brain is not operating very.
That's okay.
Guys, I'm, it's 1:00 in the morning, 2:45 in the morning for me here. Um, and then also just to mention that, you know, I'm, it's very unfortunate, but I had a turn of events where I am unfortunately not at the location where I was supposed to be, um, in Cape Town. But, um, due to some snarls in my travel plans, I am now in Johannesburg. And so, um, it's unfortunate that I won't be able to participate as a voting member of the council. But, you know, the, uh, Climate Action Plan and implementing the Climate Action Plan and being the council liaison for our Climate Action Forum is near and dear to my heart. And, um, I hope that our Larkspur community and Larkspur Council will, uh, take pride in being leaders and, um, setting a path forward for adopting the Cal Green Tier One, code to set us, um, out in the forefront and make a statement that we are committed to achieving our goals for the 23 Climate Action Plan and, um, the General Plan. And that this is, uh, really going to help us over the next six years to achieve those goals. And as is stated, you know, electrification and low carbon transportation are the two biggest, uh, contributors to greenhouse gas emissions. And so these are our best opportunities to try to reach the goals of that Climate Action Plan, which we committed to in 2021, um, as well as in our General Plan.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, do you want the staff to come, to comment on the calculation question? Or should we, we can bring that up after public comment?
Well, actually, I just want to be clear. Staff agrees that we think you should adopt these ordinances. We're simply raising the question that, that Mr. Wood have pointed out to you that the oddity of AB 130 and the historical timing of different procedures around building codes, such can this code and the way it's analyzed and the way state publishes data has created a sequencing problem. And sequencing problems are the kinds of things that people in the legal world make hay with. So I think Mr. Wood's point that staff wanted to keep on out there is,
Yeah.
we think you should adopt this. We just don't know if this odd sequencing situation could create a challenge down the road that we don't know about.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. And, um, I'm going to now, um, open this up to public comment. Just with an understanding, as the staff explained, this is on our business item. We actually will be having a public hearing, um, required by law, uh, which allows public to discuss, um, in a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is August 20th. So your, your, um, public comment that you give now will be recognized in our agenda and posted online. But just so you know, that, that this will be continuing for another public discussion in a formal way, um, in, on August 20th at our regular scheduled meeting. So if you, um, are interested in speaking to this issue, please come forward to the, um, microphone, introduce yourself. And I'd like to acknowledge one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, at least 10 public comments that have already been submitted and are, um, published online already. So, um, we're very aware of those. And as this is for first, um, discussion on this, and it will be coming back August 20th, that material will also be available for the public. So anyone, come forward, please, sir?
Good afternoon.
Just raise up your, the microphone so we can hear your lovely voice. There you go. And so that the camera can record it.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Ken Strong. I'm, um, uh, resident of Greenbrier and I'm, uh, co-chair of Marin Conservation League's Climate Action Working Group. And we've been following this thing very closely all the way along. The legislature and the governor really handed you guys a hand grenade. Um, I mean, this AB 130 was a speaker's bill. He took no amendments and held no hearings in the assembly. He, there were no hearings in the Senate. He then, um, had it grafted on to as a must-pass budget trailer bill. So there's been no explore, exploration or no attempt to correct any of these ambiguities that, uh, staff and council have talked about. We strongly urge you tonight, or this afternoon, to pass these two ordinances. There are a couple of things that can be sorted out in terms of a lack of clarity between now and August 20th. One thing we, we do think important from some of the forums we've been listening to is that if possible, the ordinance explicitly reference the, um, Larkspur Climate Action Plan and the Larkspur General Plan, both of which have plenty of references to the need for climate, for greenhouse gas reductions in them. It's just, it's just a further way to strengthen the ordinance should there be any future legal challenges to it. But passing these two and moving on to the next step, we would love to see a discussion of the Flex Path, uh, which is the major remodels thing. And, um, you would be, there are, uh, council member Margolis identified three other jurisdictions that have already approved the 2022 code. Also San Anselmo, Fairfax and Tiburon have previously adopted it. So you guys are catching up in that sense, but it's great to see you out in front with the 2025 code. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to comment on this item as a business item tonight? Sure. And Mr. Strong, I see you did submit a, uh, so it'll be in the record too.
Hi, my name is Tom Flynn and I'm a Larkspur resident. And, uh, I just want to, again, encourage as, as all of the consensus seems to be here, uh, that it'll be an appropriate and, and, and very responsible and caring, uh, vote in, in support of this. You know, you're, you're probably all aware that the World Court has just now declared that governments have to take action. And, uh, you know, essentially we have to look at the, the really big picture here. And, uh, you know, this, this also essentially is very relevant locally. You know, essentially one of our greatest risks in, in this community and, and most of California is fire risk. And it's just getting worse and worse and worse. And, you know, essentially there may be additional expenses in initial electrification, but all the indications are that long-term, it's the most cost-effective way to go. And, and, you know, essentially our major competitors like China, you know, as, as Thomas Friedman said in the, in the New York Times recently, they're laughing at us. They're laughing at us because of, of the way in which we're abandoning the greatest economic opportunities in the world now. the greatest economic opportunities in the world now. And, and, and our shorts are going to be eaten by China in terms of electric vehicles, in terms of renewable technology and so forth. And, you know, so essentially, this is the economically most appropriate and, and most in the interest of our public citizens to, to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Anyone else in the chamber want to make a comment on this business item? Remembering we have August 20th where it's coming back? Yes, ma'am?
Again, again, my name is Gillian Schultz. I'm a resident of Larkspur and I'm also a member of the Larkspur Climate Group. And I work with David Muller and he's out of the country right now as well. So I'm speaking on behalf of the group as well. And we would also like the council to adopt the 2025 CalGreen Tier One in its entirety, including the proposed amendment to add major remodels to the definition of newly constructed. And we want the council to adopt the Flex Path for Major Remodels and EV Infrastructure Reach Codes as a backup, at least until we are able to confirm the exact requirements of 2025 CalGreen Tier One. And staff's proposal to also adopt the 2022 CalGreen Tier One as a backup seems like a good idea at this time, whether or not it proves necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize that the Maulers have both submitted letters, which are in the public comment online, and a double comment from, in, in reference to the updated supplemental report. So appreciate that. I see no one else in the chamber. And so for this business item, now we have one hand raised. Can we unmute that person? Is it Mr. Holmes? Can't read from here. Mr. Holmes, unmute yourself. Do you have a comment?
James Holmes, the staff report notes that the proposed codes represent, quote, "a significant increase in Larkspur requirements" and, quote, "an ambitious electrification requirements." And we also heard the term aggressive. And, and I question whether we should adopt such an aggressive increase without any information or, or estimates on the costs that they will impose on people subject to them, or what impact they will actually have on greenhouse gases in the area, let alone in the overall county. In other words, should we impose what are clearly additional burdens without knowing anything about the extent of those burdens or the degree of the benefits? Not surprisingly, many cities still haven't adopted this. Second, we know that some of the federal benefits, or all of the federal benefits for electrification are proposed to go away. And I, and those benefits are touted as being offsets to costs. And I wonder whether we should act before we know what the benefit landscape is going to be. And third, I think we should definitely hesitate to go beyond case law by extending these requirements to any project with a 50% of changes. The rationale for going beyond new construction, of course, is that some remodels are so extensive that they're tatted out to all new construction, which is true. But can that really be said honestly and plausibly if the changes are only 51% or more? For good reason, these changes are being called stretch codes, and we are really stretching our necks out and inviting challenges. So I would restrict the requirements to new construction, or I would come up with a new approach that is more close to the idea of an overall new construction remodel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Since there's no further comment, okay, last one, and then come forward. Remembering we have another opportunity on this matter. Sure.
My name's James Bill.
Hi, James.
Larkspur. Hello. And I'm a retired architect working in the sustainability field. So this seems like such a minor adjustment. I mean, I don't know anybody in the city of Larkspur who doesn't worry about climate change and its impacts on their home and their lives. You know, this is such a minor, you know, change for somebody who's spending so much money to do a renovation. You know, we're just talking a little bit. It's like, you know, everybody wants to, to address climate change. And so this is helpful. So it's great that you're considering it, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we will return it to the council. Did any, are there other questions you might have have of staff? Yes. And then Sarah, I'll come to you too, if you have a questions of staff based on what the public comment was.
I would just actually like to make a request of staff that when we are getting more information on this before our next meeting, I am curious if there's any information, what the cost is going to be to residents, you know, to housing costs. I'm not sure how that would be calculated, but if the requirements are going to increase housing costs, how that translates into who's paying for them? And are we projecting rents are going to go up because of that? I mean, these are, we have, I, I think everybody agrees in an ideal world, everything is, is green and everything is renewable. But I think we also have to acknowledge there is some cost to it, and we have to make sure the benefit outweighs the cost. And at this point, I'm blind as far as what that cost is. I mean, I get the benefit. I don't, I can't quantify the cost. And if there's something that staff could, could prepare that would help us understand that, I, I would feel more comfortable making that decision. Thank you.
Was there any further question you had, Stephanie?
So are we, are we still asking questions? Or do we want to talk about like specific items in the?
Yeah, I think we can.
In the ordinance?
Could do both.
Okay.
So a couple of things were brought up in the public comment that, about adding the Climate Action Plan language and the general plan language, whether, if that's something that's relevant to, necessary in the actual state legislative ordinance. And then, and then could you mention the major remodel discussion?
Yeah, so first, let's talk about adding language that references the, the general plan, Climate Action Plan to the ordinance. The city attorney can again chime in on the nuances of this. Staff read public comment, received public comment. There certainly is no harm in adding that language. And on the dais and in the back of the room, there's some language drafted by staff and approved by the city attorney that would add that component to the ordinances.
That's this one.
Yes. So as a city attorney will take away the procedural part of it, but if we wanted to incorporate that language this evening as part of the first reading, we can certainly do so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that it is not necessary. It's not legally required to do this. Consistent with public comments, it might be helpful. The nuance here, and this is again where we're dealing with ambiguities in AB 130, one of the exceptions that is, that is, that was added to allow for local amendments, including after the September 30th deadline, is amendments that are necessary to implement general plan policies. So I will summarize briefly a legal concept, which is that courts tend, but do not always defer to a local government agency's own interpretation of its own policies. So if, so we thought it was a good public comment, which is why we prepared this additional recital that you could incorporate into both ordinances that would basically make it council policy that these amendments, that basically the entire regulatory structure that's being proposed is necessary to implement general plan policies, including the Climate Action Plan. However, that, whether or not it's necessary is ultimately something that a court will decide. It's a subjective determination by the court. Getting it done by September 30th is objective. If the ordinance is in effect before September 30th, it fits within the exception. And that's why we, we created this schedule to try to get that done. So I think it, it potentially helps, but isn't legally necessary.
So Scott, just to follow up question, is there any downside to including?
No, there is not.
Okay.
So everyone's clear, that was additional material that came, that staff worked on in reference to some of the public comment that was submitted in advance as an opportunity for us to add an addendum to, right?
Yes. And again, in, in an ideal world, we would have broadcast this to the community earlier, but this was late breaking in response to, to public comments. So it's in pretty small font on the, on the screen for folks. It'll be added to the website as a supplemental item after this meeting for folks to review whether or not council wants to go forward with this language to just memorialize what was referenced.
And procedurally, if it is something the council wants to incorporate, then it should just be part of the motion to add, add this text into the recitals for both ordinances.
Did you have further questions?
Yeah, and Scott, if we had specific, you know, comments on some of the language about the climate, the topography, the seismic risk, can I submit those to you for consideration? Or how do we deal with, or do we have to talk about them here? What's the?
You would have to talk about them here because the ordinances as introduced tonight, other than minor administrative or typographical issues, cannot be changed at the next, at the public hearing. So the way ordinance process works for, for everyone's benefit understanding is that in this two-step process, the city council introduces an ordinance, it is adopted, it is then adopted. But the way state law works is it must be adopted in the same form that it was introduced. And so again, because of the September 30th deadline, this is, tonight is your opportunity to make any changes. I will say that the findings that are in the both ordinances are the, the climatological, geological, and what's the other one? Geological, topographical findings that have been, that have been used in the past to justify other amendments, including the existing amendment to the 2022 CalGreen, California Green Building Standards Codes that's in effect right now. So we've relied on these findings previously for this action.
I see.
Is there a particular?
Yeah, well, okay, so, yeah, okay, I did a real close reading of this. So one, there's a reference in here that says, you know, the difference in temperature between night and day can be up to 31 degrees Fahrenheit. I thought that was just, you know, there's no citation and no reference. I mean, could we just be a little, just put something like, it could be 30 to 40 degrees? I mean, it just felt like 31 was extremely specific here. And then the city has a mix of development types, including rural development. I would just strike rural. I don't think there's any rural development here in Larkspur. And then, I know, I know, I'm nitpicking, but are we trying to look?
I just want to follow along if you, if you can reference which page or.
Okay, this is.
Which?
After the recitals of whereas, and then we're in.
We're in climate.
Yeah.
Topographical, I get it, I see it here.
There we go. So under climate, paragraph 1A.
Got it, I see that.
Yeah, so it says, you know, the difference in temperature can be up to 31 degrees Fahrenheit. I thought that, you know, from a legal perspective, if you're, if you're saying from a legal perspective, this has been used and people aren't going to challenge this, then I'll, you know, I'll rest and not make us go through these changes. But there were others.
So rural.
Oh, so. Well, paragraph 1B.
1B.
Where it says the city has a mix.
Rural development on the city's hillsides.
Right. And.
Yeah, I, I was, I have not gone back and reconstructed, but there were documents that when, when these findings were used previously, there were documents that were relied upon to, to craft the findings, and those would still be in city files.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Sarah, do you have your hand raised? Are there further comments or questions in regards to the, to the staff?
Yeah, I, I did want to just ask the staff with regards to adopting the code by reference, does that not give us an opportunity to make amendments beyond the September 30th deadline? If we do find through studies or cost analysis that some of these codes are, you know, too exorbitant or too difficult to adhere to? That was my understanding that by adopting the code by reference, that gives us some flexibility to make amendments to the code at a later date. And I just want to confirm that that is, is accurate.
Scott, can you want to weigh in on that?
So normally, yes, but again, just, just have everybody have in mind the structure that we're operating in with the ambiguities that we've talked about regarding AB 30, 130. So what the legislature did was say, you can adopt the buildings, the, the updated building codes that, that are, that were issued on July 1. And the typical cycle is they're issued, every three years, they're issued in July. They have to be adopted by, by reference by the end of the year. So you, so the legislature said you can still do that. It also said you can make local amendments, but only subject to a list of exceptions. One of the exceptions is that if it is a local amendment that is in effect by September 30th of this year, then until the, the 2031 deadline, you can re-adopt that, that amendment in future code cycles. There are some other exceptions, like the one that we've talked about, which is for amendments that are necessary to implement a general plan. But looking at it on its face, the structure of AB 130 is to say, if you want, you, you can continue to adopt the, the building codes, including CalGreen, but if you want to amend it, either it has to be an amendment that's in place by September 30th, or it has to fit within one of the other exceptions that's in place. I, I believe that the intent was to limit local amendments that were more stringent than, than the, than the standard codes. And that if after September 30th, the council would like to ratchet some of those back with more fine-grained amendments that reduce the, these, what's in Tier One, for example, I believe that that would be allowed. But again, the, one of the ambiguities is we don't know that exactly yet. But it, but it seems reasonable, given the intended structure that the legislature implemented.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Can I, can I follow up on that?
Hold on, I think, hold on, Scott, I think Sarah still had a question?
Yeah, it's not a question, it's just a comment. And so I did want to mention something that I didn't mention earlier, which is that, you know, given that Larkspur has 50% rental residents in our community, I think it's really important to note that some of our biggest impacts and abilities to move our Climate Action Plan forward are actions by our residents. And that there are many residents who are interested in buying electric vehicles but are living in rental units. And so the importance of moving forward with the EV infrastructure plan so that they can have assurance that they will have the ability to charge their vehicles is something we need to consider to represent, you know, our rental community. And that there are a lot of people who want to do the right thing, who would like to move forward with an electric vehicle. And overall, you know, it may be a net zero effect for them if rent increases based on the reduced costs that they will have in terms of buying fossil fuel versus charging their electric vehicles.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilmember Candell has one further question.
Yeah, just to follow up to make sure I'm understanding. And I think that's actually a really good point, is that if we make these stricter and then we choose not to enforce them? I mean, is that an option that in two years from now, we say, hey, you know what? You know, nobody's building here because it's too strict. We're going to let you guys build here and we're not going to enforce A, B, and C. Is that an option for us?
I'd, I'd love it if the legislature had answered that question for us. Again, I think that the intent and the structure of AB 130 is such that, just use what we're talking about, if the council ultimately adopts CalGreen at the Tier One level and that that basically sets a, a higher standard than the baseline of state law for local development, local construction. I believe the legislature's point was, if you want to do that, you got to get it done by September 30th, or it has to fit into another exception. If you then wanted to ratchet back from that with further amendments down the road, I think it's reasonable to assume the legislature would, would, would view that as acceptable, but we don't have the, the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we'll wrap up this item. We've had a lot of conversation on it and a lot of public input. And we, I've been asked by staff, the recommendation is to introduce and the proposed ordinance 1088 and 1089, which are, been discussed. And also if the option to add the subsequent additional recitals to them that were published here and published online, if we so would like. Do I have anyone who would like to introduce that as a, as a, as a?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to adopt both of them and to have the proposed additional recital to both ordinances, 1088 and 1089 included. Is, did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second. All right, may we have a roll call vote, please? Just yell.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Yes.
Mayor Way.
Yes, that motion passes, and thank you again.
Before we go on, I just had one more comment. And the comment is just, I want people to recognize the importance of comments and written public comments, that this ordinance was changed today because someone in our community said, hey, I have an idea. And it was a good idea, you know, and staff read it and said, hey, it's a good idea. I told the council and we said, hey, that's a good idea. And now it's, it's passed. So thank you, and please continue to submit your comments, because we do appreciate it.
Great, and as we remember, this will be coming back August 20th with these changes that we've discussed tonight and with additional material that will be learned in the next month, as our staff learns more and our legal counsel helps with that, too. And I will now close business item 8.1. We have one more item on our agenda, and that's 8.2, which is a request for monies from, I'll just, if people want to, I'll give a few minutes for people to retire from the room if they would not like to no longer be here. Thank you for being here and thank you for participating.
And thank you to county staff for joining us.
Yes, county staff.
Appreciate it.
Bye-bye. And we'll see you August 20th, hopefully. All right, we have one further item. I just allowed some opportunity for people who are here, mostly for business item 8.1, to leave the chamber. 8.2 is a request for monies from transient occupancy tax fund, which is called the Business Enhancement Fund from the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce and from a new business association. And there may be additional asks tonight, too. So what we'd like to do is begin with a staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's pretty straightforward. And in the written material, essentially, when the council adopted the budget, you chose at that time to take $50,000 in this TOT fund, in the Business Enhancement Fund, and leave it in the fund balance unassigned. And so we've been meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, who was the entity that often received that allocation, that assignment, and hearing about their needs. I think they've met with individual council members. And one of our concerns for our partners in the chamber is that they have really nurtured and matured a popular community event, the annual downtown wine stroll, which is scheduled for September. And they were anticipating receiving money from the city to help them with their cash flow to manage that event. So we brought this item so that you could discuss that immediate need. And we would recommend that if you're going to do an allocation to the chamber, that you grant me the authority to work out an agreement similar to the one that we've done in the past, which is identified in a resolution in your packet. However, I would note, in the staff report notes, we've received a request from a newly forming association or an alternative allocation to that group. And you have that in your packet. And then lastly, we received a comment letter from the Bonner Shopping Center asking that you consider an allocation for them. So we've given you a resolution tonight to empower you to make an allocation to the chamber. We can take direction that we can create the proper paperwork for, for any of the other allocations you may or may not decide to do this evening.
Okay, so let's just start with asking staff. I'd like you to just, I know it's in the footnote one, just to be clear, so the community understands the difference between a business improvement district and a business owners' association by law.
Yeah, so the, Mr. Jay Holland, I think is here and will probably be speaking to you later, submitted a petition, and at the top of the petition, it talks about a business improvement district. And then in the language of the petition, it talks about a business association.
Okay.
So an association is a group, right? It's an organization, could be formed on any sort of basis and doesn't necessarily have a clear legal definition until the group provides one by picking whatever codes they're using to form their association. Business Improvement District, at least California, is a defined entity. It's a legally, it's a legal construction that governments use, such as a city, to help property owners form a taxing entity so that they can then do some sort of betterment for their business district. I gave in the staff report, a common way to do the, a common reason to form a business improvement district is so property owners can tax themselves to build like a parking garage, because the whole district benefits potentially from that garage. That's just one example. We've had a few in Larkspur. We did some undergrounding in a business district by forming years ago, and they paid to underground the wires in their district. That's another kind of example. There are business improvement districts that do activities, too, but again, it's a taxing entity, a little different.
Okay, so just a clarification for, if they move forward with this, that the language has to be accurate for what the law requires, so.
Well, that petition is just a petition, right? There's not a legal basis for it, so.
So just to be clear, this resolution 4125 is asking if we would allocate to one entity, the $30,000, but we do, in the, we do have two additional requests. And if we agree with those, that would be an additional resolution? Or would that just be our direction to you to work with those communities?
Because at staff's recommendation and council placed this money in the fund balance.
Right.
I don't have the clear authority to spend it. So the resolution is to give me that authority. And you, we would similarly come back to amend the budget again, reflecting whatever direction you give us tonight.
But when we pass the budget, we did earmark $50,000 into a fund for business.
It's just sitting in the, in this fund, it's sitting in the TOT, or which we usually call it the TOT fund. It's, I think formally in your documents called the Business Enhancement Fund.
Yes.
And it's just sitting there. And so when a council does that, it's, it's meant to say, the decision to use this money is supposed to come back to the council.
Got it. So let's begin with questions of staff, I mean, of the staff from council who's here? Did Sarah leave us, or is she still there? Okay, good. No, just the screen, the screen changed, so I'm glad you're still there. I'll begin with you, Sarah, since I see you now. Would, do you have any questions on this matter of staff?
Not at this time.
Okay. Coming up here, Scott, do you have a question of staff?
Sure, I have a couple of questions. First is, in the TOT, it looks like there are three categories separate from this. There's one called community activities sponsorships, one for the Fourth of July, one for promotional activities. The community activities and promotional activities, has that been designated yet? Or is that something that we would normally designate to something like a wine stroll or some activity?
So we created that account a few years back because throughout the year, we get requests for like $1,000 here, $2,500 there, $5,000 here. And often, it's requesting the city be a sponsor to some specific event that we see as having a relationship to this fund. And so creating that account gave, gives staff the flexibility to make those allocations without being constrained by the council calendar.
So, so, so something like the Bonner request?
Could go into that.
Going, one of those.
It could, it could.
Okay.
Recall in the past, we had a youth film festival at the Lark Theater, and they wanted some additional support for that, for the documentary film festival they held, and.
Yeah, that was a COVID casualty, but before that, that was paid for out of this fund for probably six years.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, another question, I see there's a request for $30,000 for funding for the wine stroll. Were you given a wine stroll budget or something that, that's going to, explains what the 30, 30,000 is for?
So I did meet with the chamber and went over some budget information for them. And I agree, now having seen their financial situation, that they have a cash flow challenge. So the infusion of 30,000 is to guarantee they have the money to do the wine stroll and keep them cash flow solvent through the, at least the calendar year is my understanding.
And just to, for clarification on that for you, too, Scott, myself and Vice Mayor Andre have met twice, at least twice, with representatives of the Larkspur Chamber in discussion about some of their needs. And we referred that discussion to the city manager and then had that discussion with the city manager and then met with the chamber directly, the city manager did, based on our assessment and our agreement that he should meet with them.
That makes sense. Follow-up question, and I know you're on schedule. Did you follow up and find out, I mean, we gave them $75,000 last year. They had a very successful wine stroll last year. Did you find out why they're having such a cash flow problem since they had cash last year?
I accept their explanation. I think it'd probably be better if, when the time comes, you ask them to talk to you, because I think they can speak more candidly.
Okay, fair enough.
Any further questions from staff?
Well, maybe it's not a question for staff, but maybe just a question, a general question is, you know, as these requests come in, you know, what have we asked in terms of documentation, in terms of criteria, in terms of how we approve or not approve these type of requests? Is there anything written down, or is it on just a case, we evaluate on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, it kind of depends on the nature of what the agreement is. So the chamber specifically, we've had, as I provided in the staff report, we've had this annually renewed agreement that's, that's kind of broad in nature on purpose so that the relationship between the city and the chamber could remain dynamic. When some of these other groups come in, they, I ask them for a sponsorship form so I can document what it was, why we gave them money. You know, usually the activities are very self-evident, so we're, we're very clear what they're doing. You know, sometimes we pay for things that it's, you know, let me, another example, we do help support the Friends of the Library when they do events by covering their insurance, event insurance costs. We've used this fund to do that sort of thing. So the only documentation I have is a policy that I bought for the event. So it is sort of a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. No, tomorrow. But thank you for thinking of me. Okay, there's no further questions, I think, with this business item. I would like to acknowledge we have two publicly submitted comments, one from the Bonner Management Company, and another from the downtown, from Jay Holland and the Downtown Business Association, and also from the chamber. So if there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Okay? I don't bite, you know that, Jay.
Good evening, council members. Jay Holland, as you know, and I'm a longtime business owner here in Larkspur, former board member, Larkspur Chamber of Commerce. During my time on the board, I worked to support local events and businesses as best I could. I was the only board member with a daily presence in downtown Magnolia. And that perspective gave me a firsthand understanding of what the opportunities are and the unique challenges are facing downtown and north Magnolia. Unfortunately, I think the current structure doesn't serve the area well. In fact, some recent events, while they're well-intended, they've actually harmed local businesses due to a lack of communication, a lack of awareness about what works, what doesn't work, what are the unique needs here on the ground. And after voicing these concerns, I didn't see any meaningful shift in the direction, so I just decided to step down from the board. I didn't step away. Instead, I've been actively working to build something that's better suited to our unique needs, which is a new downtown Larkspur Business Association. The association is eluded in collaboration, transparency, by everybody that works and lives down here in downtown Larkspur and north Magnolia. Over the last few weeks, I've gathered 30-some signatures here in downtown Larkspur, and every single one of those business owners was, was absolutely 100% in support in this, were united in this belief that we need more focused attention, more effective budgeting, more transparent in budgeting, transparency in budgeting, real beautification efforts that exhibit the pride we have in our area. We respectfully request in that regard, $30,000 allocation to plan new events and beautification programs, specifics of which I can share with you later in a formal proposal. But I can say that some of the preliminary ideas we've come up with would be like an event in October, holiday celebration in December, improved lighting in key areas, some plantings possibly, you know, to make the downtown more inviting year-round. Larkspur downtown and north Magnolia, it's the face of our city. Residents, visitors, people from all over the country, come here and see downtown Larkspur. It's time we gave it the attention that it needs and deserves. Anyway, thank you, I appreciate your time and consideration for this.
So Jay, just, so tonight's resolution is specific for a $30,000 allocation, which would be for a downtown wine stroll, September 6?
Well, I have no problem with the wine stroll being handled by the chamber.
Okay.
But this is post-wine stroll.
Yes. That's what I'm just saying, getting to that downtown merchants are still supportive in your estimation of a September 6 wine stroll. But that moving forward, you would like to initiate a new.
Yes.
A new association.
Yes, now what we would, what I'm also asking for is transparency in the operations and the presentation of the current wine stroll. Many of the retailers did not feel that they were heard or well-represented.
Okay, so your ask for 30,000 is not something that's being considered here tonight because we're looking at a specific resolution, but it doesn't mean that that can't be brought back to us.
Okay.
I would encourage more, just creating a more, looking at and creating an association, if this is your choice, to do that in a more formal structure. And then we can move forward with any further discussions on allocations, if that's what you plan to do.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just one more quick question. I know you heard we have total of $50,000 put aside.
I could modify the question.
30 for downtown, I see Reed in the back of the room that has a, no, but he asked for 30 for downtown. We got 30 for the wine stroll, we got Reed in the back, I'm sure he's going to, you know, say, I'm in a separate area and, you know.
We would come up with a budget, once we get some more concrete ideas on the elements that we want to implement, we'd come with a budget, we'd come with a plan. I'm sure it would be less than $30,000, we'd make sure of that, and ask you to consider it.
But what, I appreciate that. What I understand them being forward is that they, giving us a heads up that there will be another, there may be another request and that would be specifically tailored to a new business district, or not district, but association.
Business association.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Sarah, did you have any questions?
I, I just, I do have a question of Jay. I heard him say that downtown business owners were not consulted or not heard. Their voices were not heard with regards to the wine stroll. And that was something that I heard as well, when I was tabling at the wine stroll, that in fact, many of the businesses closed and that they did not find the wine stroll to be an opportunity to have more customers come and more patrons come. And I wondered if Jay could elaborate on that comment.
We felt that the business owners weren't listened to. We felt that the business owners weren't listened to in terms of shutdown time, orientation of the wine tents, the winery, the tents where the wineries were, and some of the placement of some of the other retailers that were really in competition with the retailers that are in the downtown area. Those are the main concerns. There were a few that, you know, had concerns about spilling wine and their premises, but you know, those were allevied. But I'd say if there are 18 businesses in the downtown area, and I believe there are that are active, not including North Magnolia, 16 of them were upset with how the wine stroll was managed last year.
And did you, after that, did you convey that to the chambers that this year they can make adjustments and address those issues?
For, during, and after.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hope those adjustments have been made. So, all right, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing more about your idea. Is there other public comment? Okay. Is there anyone online who has a public comment that would like to speak to this matter? I'm seeing no raised hands. I'm seeing no raised hands. Okay, last call for public comment or come join us.
Mayor Way, Councilman Candell and Councilwoman Andre, thank you for having me. Writing to address the recent assertions made by Mr. Holland regarding the allocation of city funds for a downtown Larkspur Business Improvement District and specifically his criticism of community events and their impact on the local businesses. Mr. Holland has claimed that recent events, including our widely successful countywide Battle of the Bands, has not only, not only failed to bring business to the, to town, but actively distract from it, leading to reduced foot traffic and parking on event days. This perception must respectfully but firmly state is simply not born out of the facts or the sentiment of a thriving business community. I might add, while Mr. Holland was the board member, he did push the idea to have a music festival at Piper Park.
So Mike, I want to make this a personal discussion. I want to, I'd love to focus on what the resolution is before us, which is to support the chamber in a wine stroll
Yeah.
On September 6th and the success of that. I think the issues that your board and chamber of commerce have had and your interpersonal issues are probably not, should not be a public discussion because it's a personal matter in your board.
I just want to make sure that it's on record that the assertions that he's making are false.
All right.
So I'm happy to.
Yeah, but let's move it forward to how wonderful the plan is that you have so that you convince us that we want to support the wine stroll and work through some of the other issues.
The, the current structure of the wine stroll came about after my, I believe it was the first year that I took over as, as a lead of the Chamber of Commerce. And my concerns were, at the time, we weren't shutting, shutting the street down. People were, it was jam packed on the sidewalks. People couldn't get by.
Agreed.
It was not safe for families, so I shut the street down. And that brought more people to the Magnolia Business District. The second year, which was last year, was double the year before. My only criticism of it is that we didn't have better security. There were no criticisms beforehand, during, and there were some after. Where there were criticisms were during the Holiday Magic event. And we've shut that down and given it to Bonheur for them to put on. Reed Baxter requested that, so we graciously offered him to take care of the Holiday Magic event. So we wouldn't be doing that, which was a loss later because we couldn't charge for that event, which means that city money was being spent and not getting a return on it. So this year, we're anticipating another 2,000 people. The reason why we can't put tents in the middle and away from the shops is from a fire hazard. And I think everybody, all the staff and council would agree with that. So all the boxes have been checked with permitting. All the boxes have been checked with the city to make sure that we are doing it in a safe manner. We've spoken, our executive director, Marty Murphy, has gone by every one of the shops during, post, and after. So for anyone to say that we haven't conveyed, that is simply not true.
Okay, so hold on, we're going to ask, are you okay with that question now? And I'd like to acknowledge that we've been, Stephanie and I have been working with your team.
Yeah.
As Stephanie being the representative and me being the past and also the mayor, and really hoping that we would get some materials of describing what the, what the chamber has been doing, and I appreciate that that's in here as an attachment to
Sure thing.
To the performance data, it's an attachment here, so.
Getting a lot of traction on social.
Yeah.
We also implemented for the first time selling pre-sale tickets, which is helping us fund to some degree the event, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to further acknowledge that you did meet with the city manager and go over the specific needs and requests.
Yes, we did.
Okay. Scott?
And we've met with.
Yeah, I, I, I've met with you and Jay and Reed, you know.
Yep.
We're all trying to be the peacemakers here.
Yeah.
So I have two areas of questions. The first is, again, not taking one position or another, but, but I'm hearing Jay come up and say the people were complaining they didn't like the wine stroll. I'm hearing you saying there were no complaints about the wine stroll.
I didn't say there were no complaints, but I, I'm saying that it wasn't, we went by all of the merchants, pre, during, and after. And Marty can elaborate on that.
All right, so my, my question is, at this point,
Yeah.
do you understand whatever the concerns are about the merchants? And are they able to be met this year? So after this year's wine stroll, when we have a survey, are the merchants happy with the way the wine stroll went? They're all going to go, yeah, it was great. Business was up and, you know. Not, not everybody, but that's the fear, that, that's, that's what we're.
22, some are going to be, oh, this is great, and some of them are like, we don't want it.
Right, but we're, we're shooting for as many of the greats as we can.
I have to bring this down to the lowest level possible because I'm short. First of all, I really appreciate this, and I also really appreciate as someone, I used to own my own small business. Again, I'm Marty Murphy, Executive Director, part-time at the chamber. And I used to own my own small business for 13 years in the Old Town Square of Corder Madera and also in Healdsburg, briefly in Danville. I've been on Main Street. I've been in Jay's shoes, and I really respect that situation very much and have enjoyed working with him, to be honest, and with the whole team. And I have walked through and spoken to a lot of the folks, Coakley Co., I've known, I've known everybody since ever. I've lived here since 1999. My kids born and raised. To the point of this wine stroll, I do have this job from the point of their shoes. And to make a long story short, I did get the feedback about can we face the tabling? They love the event because I did ask, for example, Nicolette, having a great conversation with Nicole and Colette. I said, well, should we not have it? She goes, oh, no, 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 no. But can you do X, Y, and Z? And I think we have to receive always constructive criticism. I think, I used to work for Peloton, they used to say 1% better. We can always be 1% better. Point being, key takeaways, can we turn the tabling around? Again, I wish we could put it in the center, but I didn't know until I joined the chamber, there's a throughway safety access to that. Could we turn the tabling around? Because when it faces the merchants, there's more interaction. Another thing that we're trying to do is expand, number two, the length of benefit of having 2,000 people come downtown. Digital couponing, today I was speaking with Marjorie, the lingerie shop. There used to be raffling where merchants could collect data, contacts, connections, again, long time return. And then the final thing is talking about when we have to close down the street. Can we make better signage? Closed Saturday only, so people don't stop parking on Friday. I mean, I get it. I've been there. When I had my store on a closing note, M Clothing where Meta Yoga was, they put in the turnstile and disabled, and I lost two parking, on and on and on. I really get it. It's why I love this job. So we're taking that feedback. It's welcome. It's lastly why I've worked very hard on our social media. We had 40 followers. We're going to get to 1,300 soon. I am offering and volunteering to go into every store as a member, take photos, promote them. And I've had more than one person tell me at their grand openings, like at aesthetics and other places, that the work I did for free, took maybe $20 of my time, half an hour, they filled their grand opening. I'm working on the things that are low cost, effective, from Redwood High School Foundation to downtown and Bonheur and the Mart. So for the wine stroll, those are ideas, and I'm receiving the feedback and we're working on it.
Good, yeah, Marty, you go. I don't know if you're the person to talk to. Are you the person talking about finances?
Julie can't make it today.
Julie, Julie could not make it today, but.
All right, so let me, so I have, I have two concerns. One is I want to make sure the business district is represented and then they're happy with what you're doing and you're helping them. The other is when we as a city are funding something, that the funds are just being used responsibly. And, and I'm trying to, to understand, I know, I think last year, the wine stroll was probably 60 bucks a ticket. You know, there had to be close to 2,000 people. You're talking 120,000. We gave you guys 75. That's almost $200,000. You know, just on those two things. It, it, it concerns me when I hear the city managers say they're having cash flow problems. I mean, I'm assuming we'll, we'll get through the wine stroll and there's going to be a big, you know, and I know that you don't keep 100% of the ticket prices. I get that. And I know there are costs to run it, but, but at the end of the day, this is a pretty net positive event that should, you know, my, my thought was last year that what was pitched to us was we're just, you know, we're, we're rebranding, we're starting fresh. We need some kickoff money and then we're going to be self-sustaining. You know, and I would love you guys to get to that point, and I'm, I'm trying to help you get to that point. But I just want to make sure that everything's being used responsibly.
So we had the conversation about this, right? And I mentioned that after the first year of wine stroll, which was hugely successful, there was, city council asked us to do a community event, a non-chargeable community event. We came up with Holiday Magic. Downtown district doesn't want Holiday Magic. First year, they didn't have many concerns. Second year was an absolute mess, right? And so that, that wiped out 40. Last year's wine stroll brought in 70. So we're, we're at a buck 10 and a first time event with, and we have staff that we can't use that money for, right? So between, between those events, a brand new event that we're trying to build up to be successful and having staff, mixers, ribbon cuttings, all of our finances are, are in check and we've offered them to you guys. You have access to all of our monthly financials. Everything's in line, so you're more than welcome to take a look at it, but it.
I'm just voicing my concerns that.
Fair. If we, which we did, block off no more Holiday Magic and we have one event or two events, if we can get the Larkspur Festival or Countywide Battle of the Dad Bands back, then I would hope that we would be fine.
But we're, we're focusing on the wine stroll at this moment, so. Yeah.
I appreciate that.
And I think to your point, Scott, Stephanie's been working very closely with the chamber as their representative, and we've met several times, all the, the group of us.
Yeah.
And really, I want to give Stephanie kudos to really working with Mike and Marty about getting this data clearer to us and, and also not biting off too many events that are not capable of really doing with their limited budget and limited staff. And with the responsibility that we have for spending and allocating our money for the benefit of our business community and our taxpayers and our residents. So, which is how we kind of got to this point because the wine stroll is right around the corner and it won't happen without any additional support from us.
I'll, I'll just say that no other chamber, I mean, every chamber gets funding from the jurisdiction that they're in. And I think, you know, these events, they benefit the public as well as the business community. And so I do think it's worthwhile for the city to fund some of this. I mean, I, I know you, you said last year that, you know, you hoped that the chamber would be self-funding or self-sufficient. I mean, that's, that's a great goal, although I, I just think that it's a difficult goal because a lot of the, look, the event, the events cost money, you, you know, that, that's just a reality. And they can't use city funds to pay the executive director, and so they do have to cover, you know, staffing costs. So, you know, I, my view is just that, you know, do I think that they are providing a public good for residents, for, you know, the business community? You know, should the city support events and programming like that? Yes. Now, I do also understand that there, you know, we have a downtown business district and Bonheur and other areas as well who would like to see cities, some city support for their events. Look, I, I think it would be ideal if everyone could work under the same umbrella, but if we can't, then, you know, that's why my question earlier was, what's our criteria as a city council as we evaluate these requests that are coming in? You know, how, how are we going to look at this? Because it would be great if, you know, we had one organization, everybody, you know, was working together in that, but we don't have that right now, and so I just, I, this might, yeah. So should we come up with just some criteria so everyone's clear? Here's what's required. Here's what we're hoping for when, you know, the city disperses funds. We like to see some public benefit. We like to see benefit for the, you know, businesses. Can we get some data about, you know, post-event? Can we get some data in terms of the number of attendees? You know, what do we think?
Get the data.
Okay, revenue per square foot from the, from the business owners, whatever it is. I think we want to try, yeah, I think we can try and work on something like that so that it doesn't feel like we're, again, that we're being, I, I hope that we can be fair to, you know, all the business owners in terms of our evaluation and support what it is that you all are trying to do. You know, and, and at the same time, let's be transparent and make sure that everybody, we're, we're, the, the public understands where the money is going and that we are seeing some return from, for the funds.
Okay, so I'd like to move this along. I think I see, we might have one more public comment. Yes. Thank you, Mike, for that and for your written information.
Hi, Council. I'm Reed Baxter, other one in South Aliso. And my daytime, in my daytime, I'm the general manager for Bonheur Shopping Center. We have community events throughout the year. We're a community center. One such events we have is the Community Fair that we have in the spring, where we have over 50 nonprofits, over 2,000 participants, and it costs less than $9,000. So we're pretty efficient with our funding, with our planning, and we are a profit. Well, we want our businesses to be successful, but we're, we're traffic driven. Traffic's key to a successful retail brick and mortar store, and that's how we think about things. We do traffic studies. We have people that sit in chairs and click, click, click all day long. So we can understand, is this event actually meaningful? Does Santa bring people or does he scare people? The, the Easter bunny, you know, it's 50, 50 some years, but we've got a really good one this year.
Good to know.
So I'm pumped about that. So our grant that I think we submitted, we're asking for $5,000. We don't need anywhere near what they need for downtown Magnolia. But one of the things that comes to my mind is that we do have different business interests and different business communities here in Larkspur. And I want these guys to be successful in North Magnolia. I want the wine stroll to be successful. I want my businesses to be successful also. It'd be nice if we could come up with an equitable way where each district gets a similar amount of attention from these TOT funds.
I agree.
I think at the end of the day, nobody knows their districts like the people that are doing business there every day.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thanks.
And I'd also like to acknowledge that there's a three-page letter that was submitted that's in our packet. So I just want to bring this home now. I think we've had a lot of discussion out of the chambers with council, with, with the chamber members and other business leaders by our council representatives and our city staff. The resolution we have before us, which is 4125, which the staff has asked that we recommended approval, is specific for allocating $30,000 to the Chamber of Commerce to be used for this event coming up. It doesn't say it in here specifically, but that's the understanding is that it would be for the September, to help support the September 6th wine stroll event. Is that clear?
That's not correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, please.
You're authorizing me to enter into a 20 fiscal year, 2526 agreement of the form that was done in past fiscal year
Got it.
For the amount of $30,000. For the amount of $30,000. You can say it to DAS. You're never gonna ever, ever, ever get another agreement out of us if you don't do the wine stroll. And they'll probably walk away and know that's what you wanted. But the agreement is, here's $30,000 for this general partnership that we.
Got it. So it is, the resolution is for you to engage with a allocation that we have approved of $30,000 to the chamber, not specifying that, but our encouragement is that it goes to this event. Got it. And although we have heard from two other entities, this specific resolution is not directed to two other entities, although we may be interested in having a further dialogue, requesting that we engage that way with the other two entities.
I think the item is sufficiently broad that you could give us direction with respect to the other requests that you've heard this evening.
Okay. How does everybody think about that? It's a business item.
I question, and you may have answered this, but the $30,000 you have reviewed the finances and feel that's an appropriate amount to what's necessary for the chamber to be able to carry on for this event and the remainder of the year.
Yes, I, I do.
Okay, all right. So I defer to that.
Yeah.
And I think I'm comfortable with that. If we want to, and I'm sorry, are, are we able to authorize you to allocate money to the other associations at this point? Or is it something that you would like to be done on a case, case, case-by-case basis with the council?
I had already broached the subject with Mr. Baxter, and I think I'll just reengage him. I think the existing allocation fits really nicely, the authorization you've already given me. It's within my spending authority. It matches the intent of our sponsorship account. So I'd like to talk to him about framing his needs that way.
Fine with that.
I think this other downtown association, it, it sounds like we need to work out what that relationship looks like, what this entity is, and maybe entering into some sort of document that serves as a, whether it's a letter of understanding or an actual agreement. I don't know. We'd need more conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it's an idea that needs to be further explored, but at this point, it's not really fleshed out for us to allocate funding for it right now. But I'd be willing as a representative or to work with them, representatives of the downtown business community, to really think this through in a more refined way.
I also would like to suggest that, and we have plenty of lead time, but I think for next fiscal year, we may want to create a process in the early spring where the entities that might be interested in TOT funds have the opportunity to engage the council in a sort of formal process. So you'd have time to digest what they're asking for and why they're proposing it.
And that would be helpful, I think, to all of us and is even maybe a checklist or really a budget assessment form that we could hand to an organization to say, these are the certain things we want to see the information about. Because it has been a little nebulous for me of what we're expecting to be reported back on. That would help us, I think, to, to your point, in what are the funds going to? What are the markers that we can assess? We don't have that right now, but I think a tool like that might be kind of helpful. And it doesn't have to be that elaborate, but.
And I'm sorry, are you suggesting that Jay reach out to you at this point and?
We probably need to have some conversations about how to get to a point where there's something to approve.
Okay.
An association.
Well, and some sort of arrangement with the city. I eventually would come back to you.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I hope that's understood by everyone. Do you, do you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. I don't, I think Sarah's yawned.
In the morning there.
We love you. Okay, so if that's clear to everyone, I need. Okay, Jay, we're gonna work on this. We're, we're not done. Yeah, well, that's, that's something that, that we can work on. But thank you. So we have a resolution in front of us, 4125. I think it's been explained. And I think we have given also instruction about our comfortability with the city manager allocating additional funds to additional business requests that have been formalized and brought to us tonight. So do I have a motion to accept resolution 4125?
I will make that motion.
I will second. We need a roll call vote.
Oh, Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andre?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes. All right, that closes the resolution 4125, but it does not close our conversation, further discussion with helping our residents and business community to create even better policies and procedures going forward. So we look forward to that. And I think we're on a little time crunch for both of those measures. So appreciate that you are taking that initiative to work with them. I know the one second submission was for an event on the same day, September 6, something like that. All right, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is August 20th and here at 6:30 rather than a 5:00, 5:00 PM start. We're adjourned. Thank you.